Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, January 10th, 2018, to order, and Happy New Year to everyone. Can we have a roll call, please, Mr. Alexandrovich?
Yes. Mrs. Witkowski.
Here.
Mr. Gamble.
Here.
Mr. Nielsen.
Here.
Mrs. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mrs. Larson.
Here.
And I am here.
Thank you. And the meeting has been properly posted. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this party elect for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item three on the agenda is community comment. Would anyone in the audience like to make community comment tonight? Anyone in the audience? Hearing none. Then we'll move on to item four. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Witkowski, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gamble, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Item five is school board announcements. Do we have any announcements tonight? Bless you.
There's a number of Franklin Education Foundation events coming up. There's a family bowling event this Sunday, you can still sign up online. There's also Valentine's Appeal going on next month, a fashion show on February 22nd, featuring some of our own teachers doing the modeling. And there's also a spring assignment sale on March 24th. And there's also a Dining for Dollars event, if you show up at Buffalo Wild Wings on January 15th. A portion of these sales will go to the foundation, and you'll need one of these to make that happen.
Thank you.
So you want one, pass the one.
I would just add that next Thursday at 6:00 at the Saber Center is the District Spelling Bee, so if any board members would like to be pronouncers, we still have spots open.
Oh, really? Okay, Thursday at 6:00?
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you very much. And our next item is the school board calendar. And we have a regular board meeting on Wednesday, January 24th, 2018, here at the ECC at 6:00 PM, and a regular board meeting Wednesday. The agenda says February 2018, let's see. February 14th, at 6:00 PM here at the ECC. And then item seven are reports and presentations. We have the Forest Park Middle School presentation, and Mrs. King. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello, good evening.
Deep breaths, folks. I say it out loud because I'm thinking it myself. Thank you for welcoming us here. Mr. Mizziak and I are proud to be here, he's here, there he is, this evening in order to provide some insight into the lives of our middle school students. As you know, our areas of focus this year are literacy and engagement, and tonight we are presenting one strategy that we utilize to increase both of these areas within our building. I'm proud to be joined by Mrs. Tina Josephson and Mrs. Lydia Boss, who will be taking us through the why and the what behind book talks. We will then have the pleasure of hearing book talks presented by a handful of our finest middle school students. As I stated, these book talks are a way of addressing literacy and engagement, but they also provide us a lens into the mindset of a middle school student. You will start to hear some themes around leadership, or self-confidence, a little bit of romance, competition, and understanding oneself, all themes that are present on a daily basis at Forest Park.
What a big book talk is, is they have a book, it's generally a book that they're reading or have recently read, and they kind of explain it. Here's a book, sometimes they tell why they chose it, usually, oh, so-and-so suggested it. We're big about, you know, if somebody likes a book, suggest it to a friend, get others reading that genre, that author, et cetera. Usually they hold the book, if they have it, describe a little bit about what it's about, kind of get others interested, maybe ask, you know, not, don't give away the ending, but just give a little to get them interested, and then kind of say, hey, if you like this type of book, this is maybe what you'd like to read.
And that leads us into the why. Just like when we see a good movie, we want to share what we're reading with our friends. So the why is to help engagement and to help open our minds to new books. So without further ado, we are going to now circle our students through for a quick one to two-minute book talk, and they will be far more engaging and exciting than the three of us. Well, at least me, that's me for me, not this group.
Thank you.
I should say, the handout that you have, the first page is really the description from the research around the purpose of book talks, how they go, and the why. The second page are the books that our students will be talking through, and we'll be going in that order in case you'd like to look along. The synopsis there is provided to you via Amazon, they're not nearly as well-written as the students behind us.
Life is made up of so many moments that mean nothing, then one day, a single moment comes along to define every second that comes after. This quote is from An Ember in the Ashes, a book by Saba Tahir. My name is Harper Navin, I'm an eighth grade Forest Park Middle School student. I picked this book up for the first time at the beginning of the year from a suggestion by Ms. Weber, my literacy teacher. Since then, I have read it twice. It's one of my favorite books, mainly because it's so thrilling and fast-paced. It keeps your attention from the beginning to the very last word. This book is similar to other popular young adult books such as Divergent and The Hunger Games. They all have fierce heroines, chilling battles, page-turning suspense, and exciting quests. An Ember in the Ashes focuses on the stories of the two main protagonists, Laia and Elias. Laia is a poor scholar living under the reign of the evil commandant and the martial army. Through an unfortunate chain of events, Laia ends up actually spying on the commandant who works close with martial soldier and top student Elias. The book has central themes of social status, freedom, and I would recommend this book for people who enjoy action-filled dystopian series with a bit of magic and romance. This book ends with a cliffhanger that will leave your mind reeling. Luckily, An Ember in the Ashes is the first installment of a trilogy. The second book, A Torch Against the Night, continues the excitement started in An Ember in the Ashes by Saba Tahir.
Wow.
Hello, my name is Ryan Wooders from the seventh grade White House, and my literacy teacher is Ms. Boss. Today I'll be talking to you about The Book Once by Morris Leitzman. In The Book Once, the main character is Felix, who is a young Jewish boy in Poland hiding from the Nazis. The setting of this book is during the time where Nazis were trying to take over the earth and eliminate all Jewish people. Felix had been dropped off by his parents when he was very little, but he doesn't remember much of his parents. He does remember that his parents were Jewish booksellers who loved books. One day, a group of Nazis drove toward the orphanage he was staying at and burning Jewish books in front of his own eyes. Felix decides to escape from the orphanage and venture into the Nazi-occupied Poland to warn his parents of the Nazis. Felix has little knowledge of the war. To Felix, he sees it as a big risk with a high reward. On his way to the city, he finds a little girl named Zelda, whose parents were killed by the Jewish resistance group. Felix's path to finding his parents gets more dangerous as he witnesses things he never could have imagined. Felix uses his leadership and positive character traits to make the right choices.
Love, romance, fighting, and death, all within one castle, that is, set in the future when the USA was overturned by a man by the name of Gregory Ielia. Hi, my name is Sydney Lewandowski, and I'm an eighth grader in Red House. The book that I will be talking about today is The One, from the Selection Series. This book was my favorite book out of the six books in the series, including the companion book. I read this last year, and it has since been in my top three favorite series. It's an action-filled sci-fi book with some romance, if you will. Now, if you haven't heard of the Selection Series, you definitely should read it, but here's a little overview. America, the main character lives in a pretty poor family because her cast is of five. A cast is kind of like districts in The Hunger Games, determining how much money they have. Girls of Ielia enter a competition to compete for the prince, who overall has to choose a wife. Only thirty-five girls are chosen, and America is one of them. The One is the third book, and at this point she's in the last four girls and is fighting really hard for Maxon, the prince. Now, of course, if it's any good book, there's no way it'll be just four girls fighting over a guy. There's rebels, violent groups of people who attack the castle in order to take over the country, which is, right now, not in its greatest shape. And then you bring in Aspen, America's teenage boyfriend. He's now a guard at the castle interfering with America's prolonged relationship with Maxon. As the story unfolded, I found myself in the character's shoes, especially America's, and loved the story so much. Here's a little piece of the action. This time, we were in the great room enduring another etiquette lesson when bricks came flying through the window. Elise immediately hit the ground and started crawling for the side door, whimpering as she went. Celeste let out a high-pitched scream and bolted towards the back of the room, barely escaping a shower of glass. Chris grabbed my arm, pulling me, and I broke into a run alongside her as we made our way to the exit. Hurry, ladies, Sylvia cried. Within seconds, the guards had lined up at the windows and were firing, and the bursts of sound echoed in my ears as we fled. Whether they came with guns or stones, anyone showing the smallest level of aggression within sight of the palace would die.
Hello, my name is Lawrence Rosby. The book that I will be presenting to you today is Every Last Word by Tamara Ireland Stone. This book follows the story of Samantha McAllister, a popular girl who hides the fact that she has purely obsessional OCD, meaning that she obsesses over every moment, dealing with impulses and unwanted thoughts. Later on in the book, she meets Caroline, a blunt, confident, and sarcastic girl who introduces Sam, as she would later be referred to as, to the poet's corner, where she is able to express her thoughts and emotions through literature. I chose this book as I have a large interest in realistic fiction and the different interpretations of social issues. And it just so happens that this book portrays reactions and perspectives to mental illnesses and societal standards and constructs of popularity and acceptance. I found an immediate interest in this book once I saw how they express their emotions and release their tensions through poetry. If you want a heart-wrenching and beautifully emotional story, I would recommend for you to read this book. As an example of how they accept and convey their feelings and thoughts, here is a poem from Caroline, Sam's newfound friend. "These walls heard me when no one else could. They gave my words a home, kept them safe, cheered, cried, listened, changed my life for the better. It wasn't enough, but they heard every last word."
Hi, my name is Doreen Asham, and I'm in Blue House seventh grade. And in literacy, we are working on writing an essay on two books that we have read. The same motif or lesson learned. A book that I really liked is Someone to Love Me, written by Aunt Scarf. It is a series called Blueford Series. One thing that all books have in common is self-doubt. Someone to Love Me, Cindy is a girl who has trouble at school and even bigger at home. Everybody thinks her mom looks stunning, but everybody thinks she looks ugly. She looks at herself every day and tells herself that she's not ugly, she is ugly. For example, in the book is stated, "You ain't nothing like your mama." He said, "This shows that she was self-doubting herself, people were self-doubting her, and she was self-doubting herself." I was able to find this book because of Mrs. Josephson. You're an amazing teacher, thank you. I would definitely recommend this book, especially for people who have self-doubt. In this series, they teach you how to be able to solve self-doubt, how to be able, there's different ways to solve self-doubt, in multiple ways. I think this book can help someone. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sharon Hiramai, and I'm a middle schooler at Forest Park. This book is called I Hadn't Meant to Tell You This by Jacqueline Woodson. The reason I picked this book was because I have read other books by Jacqueline Woodson and thought that this would be good as well. In this book, the main character Mary is motherless, and as much as she doesn't realize it, it will affect her life forever. Not only will it affect her, but also her father, who feels as if without a relationship, he cannot function. Meanwhile, at school, Mary feels apart from all the kids and her friends. She feels as if her friends around her don't like her for who she is, but for what she wears. Then, when a new girl named Lena comes, everyone immediately mimics and teases her for being white. Mary, however, believes that Lena isn't as bad as she looks, and later realizes the hardships of being the new girl. I would definitely recommend this book to people who like realistic and historical fiction, because there is a mix of this in this book.
Happiness can be found even in the darkest of times, only if one remembers to turn on the light. We must all face a choice between what is right and what is easy. These are some quotes from Harry Potter. Hi, my name's Rohit Raghunathan, and I am an eighth grader in Red House, and my literacy teacher is Ms. Weber. I love to read, especially the Harry Potter series. This is the best series that I've ever read because of all the action and adventure. It has twists and surprises around every corner. This series was written by J.K. Rowling, and this book, Harry Potter and the Sorcerer's Stone, is the first book in the series. You may be wondering why I even picked up this book in the first place, because I wasn't even born then. This book came out in June 26, 1997. I read this book partly because I love to read series, but the major reason was when me and my family were with our friends in Ohio, we watched Harry Potter and the Sorcerer's Stone in the December of 2013, and ever since then, I was interested in Harry Potter. I got the books, all the books in the series, on my 10th birthday, and ever since then, I've read Harry Potter over five times. This installment of the series is about an orphan named Harry Potter who lives with this Aunt Petunia and Uncle Vernon and his cousin Dudley. They really mean him because he's different from them. Harry's parents were a witch and a wizard, and they were magic. They went to a school called Hogwarts and was just located in the Highlands of Scotland with a big lock next to it. Harry's parents were a James Potter and Lily Potter, but they were murdered by Lord Voldemort, a dark wizard. Voldemort wanted to kill Harry, but his parents refused to let Voldemort harm Harry, so they got murdered. But Harry survived Voldemort's wrath magically, but it left him with this infamous lightning bolt-shaped scar on his forehead. Harry gets to go to Hogwarts when he's 11, and there he learns how to harness his powers and find out who he is. He also meets his best friends, Ron Weasley and Hermione Granger. Harry and his friends are in for one big ride as Harry tries to find out about his past and future. There are many themes hidden throughout the series, such as friendship, fighting back against evil, loyalty, trust, teamwork, and love, and many more hidden. If you like action-adventure twists and turns that'll keep you guessing throughout the whole story, this is the series for you. We've all got both light and dark inside of us. What matters is the part that we choose to act on, and that's who we really are.
I would first like to thank all of the students for sharing their books with us. And now you likely have a book that you want to pick up next, but in case you don't, the staff at Forest Park wanted to share with you their recommendations, so on the last page of your packet, you have recommendations from the staff at Forest Park. Thank you.
I don't know if the rest of the board has comments, but I just want to say you had great eye contact when you were speaking to us, so that was really impressive, and I know there's some books that I might be interested in after hearing your reports, and your parents should be really proud of you. It's not easy to sit here and speak to us like that, so thank you very much.
Really good book reports. It's not easy to get up in front of all of us and do that, you did a good job.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda is reports and presentations, item 7B, our athletics and activity report with Mrs. Sarah Unertl.
Good evening, and thank you for letting me be here today. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Sarah Unertl, the athletic and activities So I will give a brief overview of the highlights of the athletic and activities report that all of you received last week. So to start, students, athletic and activity opportunities are an important extension of our district's curriculum, and we believe that athletics and activities provide special opportunities to promote their mental, physical, social, and emotional development. We also know a successful athletics and activities program requires the support of students, staff, parents, guardians, and community, and strives in the end for quality and preparation, presentation, sportsmanship, and the efforts of participants. At Franklin Middle and High School, it is our goal to get every student involved in at least one sport or activity well in high school and in middle school. That is our goal, our overarching goal. At the conclusion of the 2016-17 school year at the high school, our dedicated coaching and advising staff have led our teams to a combined 133 conference championships, 13 state team runner-up championships, and 24 state team championships. Additionally, students in our activity programs regularly compete among the state's best at local and national conferences, as well as state and national competitions. And as you know, Franklin's tradition and pride truly runs deep. That being said, moving on to the operations side of things, when initiating a new activity at the middle school or the high school, we have an application process that students and staff can follow in order to bring about a new sport or activity. New groups are reviewed in the spring for potential implementation the following school year, and then annually, all groups are reviewed as well to make sure that they fit the mission and vision of our district. In looking at our coaches and advisors evaluation, we have a comprehensive three-part process that we use to monitor and evaluate our coaching and advising staff. Every August, I meet with our head coaches for a meeting where we go over yearly expectations and procedures. I also meet with advisors in September, once the school year has begun, then we have various conversations throughout each sport or activity's respective season, and then at the end, there's a final formal evaluation that I sit down with our head coaches and advisors, and we go over that. When looking at Title IX as a district, we are currently in compliance with Title IX participation requirements, and we will continue to monitor this data closely as we take this very seriously. We have two full-time athletic trainers, as well as rotating student trainers, that service all of our home athletic practices and competitions at the high school. We currently have a contract with the Midwest Orthopedic Specialty Hospital, and we are in our seventh year with our partnership with them. Moving on to fundraising, all of our athletic and activity groups can do up to three fundraisers that can last no more than three weeks, per board policy, and many of our groups and teams do take advantage of this opportunity to help offset the costs associated with running successful programs. Many of our groups also take part in Saber Spirit's calendar raffle, as well as concessions, and those two things do not fall in our fundraising guidelines as far as one of the three that they can do. And this year alone, our Saber Spirit Club gave out over $12,500 to 17 different athletic groups, which is a very appreciated partnership with them to do that and make that possible. Additionally, we have a very successful athletic and activity golf outing that we have every year in June. Over the past nine outings, we've raised over $230,000 to, again, offset various needed athletic and activity projects. This year will be our 10th outing in Friday, June 15th, if you're available, we'd love to see you there. Similarly, we currently have eight athletic and activity-related booster groups at the high school, and this number has greatly expanded over the last couple of years. It's something that we'll continue to monitor and explore so we can function the best way possible for our students and our groups. Do you have questions now or later? We can save them for the end, if that's okay. Okay. Our code of conduct has been around a long time, and it's reviewed annually. It's thoughtful, comprehensive, and aligns with the goals and the mission of our district. Our middle school program, athletic and activity program, is very strong, and we look to become stronger as we move the sixth grade over to Forest Park in the coming years. For example, of our involvement, for the 2016-17 school year, we had 269 girls involved in athletics and 185 boys involved in athletics, out of a total enrollment of 720. We also have had over half of the students involved in activities as well. Finally, the district arranges and provides transportation for all of our school-sponsored athletics and activities. Moving on to the points of pride for our team successes, this year, after the fall season, our girls' cross-country, girls' golf, and girls' tennis teams have won conference championships, which currently has us two points ahead of our rival Oak Creek in the Southeast Conference All-Sport Championship standings. And last year, our palms or dance and gymnastics teams won state championships, and our football and cheer teams were runner-ups. For specific student recognitions, this year alone, we have many things to celebrate. For starters, many of you know we won the inaugural WIAA Award of Excellence Award, which is a reflection on our entire student athlete population. We also recently had a student athlete on our boys' basketball team achieve his thousandth point. On the activity side of things, we had our first-ever Voices of FHS, which a few of you were at, and that was put on by our new TED Ed group, which is a new activity group this year. Our fall play was a success, and we look forward to our spring musical, The Little Mermaid, which is sure to be another outstanding production as well. Additionally, our students in athletics and activities are recognized weekly for their efforts through the Athlete of the Week and Activity Student of the Week process. They're featured in our Saber Pride, which is a weekly newsletter that's emailed out to high school students and staff, as well as our coaches and advisors. It's also placed in our high school newsletter and displayed on the front announcements display case at the high school. Announcements about individual and team accomplishments are read and posted on the daily school announcements at the middle and high school. They've also been featured on the front marquee out at the high school, as well as posted on students' lockers, and they've been given handwritten notes from time to time as well. We also have trophies displayed in our school's various display cases, and our record boards are continuously updated. In recent years, record boards for most sports have been generated, and we recently just purchased new gym banners because we ran out of room on our old banners, which is a good thing. We also have the capability to recognize our students on the stadium video display scoreboard, and as of two weeks ago, we got a new scores table in our gym that highlights additional student accomplishments for our volleyball, basketball, and wrestling teams. As far as scholarship goes, this year alone, we've had five students sign their letters of intent to play their sport at the next level, and we plan to have more commitments this spring. We honor students at least twice a year for their commitment to either play their sport at a D1, D2, or D3 level every year. So we call those signing days or commitment days, depending on what university or college they will attend. We additionally recognize one male and female to represent Franklin in the WIA Scholar-Athlete Program, and information about that just came out, so selections will be coming in the coming weeks. We also have a Male and Female Athlete of the Year Award that we do annually, and for the past two years, we've been fortunate enough to apply a scholarship amount with that award. This year, we're going to be offering two scholarships to students involved in activities as well, a male and a female. Finally, overall, our athletic and activities program is doing exceptionally well, but there's always room for improvement, and some of the areas we'll continue to monitor will be to find ways to support our female participation in sports. Again, we've done a good job of being in compliance with Title IX numbers, we've added a third-girl soccer team and a stunt team, but that's something we continue to monitor and make sure we're in compliance on. We'll also continue to monitor the addition of groups so that we're certain we're meeting the needs of our student population. And then in the end, again, our overarching goal is to get students involved in at least one sport or activity well in middle and/or high school, and we'll do that through informing different parties involved in the process, whether that be orientations, social media announcements, lunch walkthroughs, sports information nights, et cetera. Thank you. Questions?
Yes. On the funding side, all that fundraising that's going on, you know, the booster groups, how is, what are the, how are the goals established? You know, what is expected that they would raise versus what the district provides, generally speaking?
So with our booster groups, we've been meeting with our booster presidents annually in August, and we have those discussions. They outline the three different fundraisers that they're going to do for the school year, and they follow the same guidelines that we do for our activity groups. So they tell us what they're thinking, and then we, you know, either approve or kind of hear them in a different direction, and then at the end of the year, we look at what they brought in to support their different teams.
My question is more along the lines of what they use the funding for.
So it could be, it could be anything. I mean, it's usually equipment-related items. Sometimes they, you know, whether that be additional practice jerseys, shooting shirts, or basketballs, or, you know, helping to fund different team outings, events, bonding experiences, things like that. experiences, things like that.
But the base that the district provides, I would imagine, is uniforms and groceries and transportation?
Right, yes.
That's covered? They don't have to fundraise for that?
Correct, yeah.
To piggyback off of Linda's comment, I think it's kind of a misunderstanding or misnomer for a lot of folks when they look at fundraising opportunities. The district is obligated to provide the minimum equipment necessary to perform in a sport. So taking football, for example, pads, helmet, jersey, but obviously not covering something like cleats. The pads have kind of a base standard. If a booster or the club came to you and said, "We want to buy the newest, greatest, smaller pads versus the large pads that they've used over the past couple of years," is that something where the discussion from your standpoint would be, "Let's figure out what district funds we have because pads are an essential function of the sport of football?" Or is that something because it's above and beyond what the district would consider as a baseline that it would be something that the booster or this fundraising activity would solely fund? When we're talking about base level of equipment, walk me through that process of how you analyze that type of ask.
Sure. So, I mean, we have that obviously regularly, and we have to look at, safety obviously is number one, our number one concern, and we want to make sure everybody is, you know, outfitted and a helmet, obviously, for football. So that is something as a district, we do cover that cost of that. If it's something, you know, more personal, like an undershirt or a swimsuit or something like that, that's going to be going home with the athlete, and we're not going to recollect that as a district, that's when we look more to those costs that the district doesn't cover. Yeah.
So for an individual concern, for example, helmets, you know, there are some helmets that are specially suited for multiple concussion victims versus a base helmet. If a player had a previous concussion and they want a better helmet, is that something the district would provide, or is that something that we would fund potentially through the booster fundraising realm?
Sure. We've been fortunate enough to be able to provide the latest and greatest in helmets and what Coach Brown has wanted for the safety of his players. And to my knowledge, everybody's been able to get, you know, the latest and greatest helmet, whether they had a concussion or not.
Thanks.
Yeah.
What is the tolerance on Title IX? We were at 276, is it?
The general rule is like 5%, within 5%. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then one other question for you. I mean, you mentioned here in the booster clubs, perhaps we can look, moving back to having one booster club for athletics and one for music, what Saber Spirit Club is that, was that out of the, how it was pretty much dictated a couple of years ago where all the clubs had to get their own, the number for?
501(c)(3).
Thank you very much, I was basing it. Is that what you're talking about? And it got to be where everyone had to have their own, and it just got to be real difficult to manage?
Yeah. I mean, it's, I mean, we're up to eight, and that, like I said, that's increased significantly in the last couple of years. Obviously, we like the support of our booster groups. They are doing a fantastic job in terms of the money raised and helping our programs. I think it's just easier to manage from a fiscal side of things because if, let's say, you know, your boys' booster group programs are bringing in $100,000, and your female booster programs are only bringing in 15, as a district, you have to look to help offset that additional money. So your boys and female programs, male and female programs are getting the same amount of money. So from that standpoint, it's a little bit harder to manage and control that aspect. We're doing a great job with it, but if you had one and one-point person to say, "Okay, you know, this is where we're going to move this 50 grand toward, and this is where we're going to move this 50 grand toward," it's a little bit easier than working with eight different people and eight different programs.
Well, and the reporting, and any new sports that come in have to set up their own 501(c)(3), and that's an expense, and it's?
And every year, you have new people in those positions, so you have to train them on the different paperwork and processes.
Okay. That's kind of what I thought you were leaning to there, and it was kind of a little bit of an experiment, but be interesting to see how that goes then.
Yeah.
Do you have equity issues between sports? Or doesn't it matter? Is it just male, female, or?
It's overall, male, female.
You mean, one booster club might be just better at raising funds, so they wouldn't get those funds, and they have to be reallocated, or? I mean, if you're a volleyball parent and you want that money to go to your, you know, your volleyball team, you're saying if they were very successful and the cross-country team wasn't successful, there could be some issues there, or?
I don't think there'd be issues. I mean, obviously, we need to fund things to keep our program strong and successful. I think just overall, we need to make sure that we're fair to both genders, and it would be easier when working with just one group versus eight, to make sure that that continues to happen.
Would you say that the overall funding that comes in through having more booster clubs is higher, about the same as if it was just one?
I think we could get to where we are with eight with just one. I think, and I've been here eight years, I don't have the history with when we were just one as a Saber Spirit Club, but I think we could get there. You know, if we have this support from our community, and we funneled them to one group instead of eight, I think we could still accomplish what we are. Just be easier with the one.
Is there any historical numbers on what booster clubs were doing prior?
I don't think there ever was one.
Well, we started with Saber Spirit Club.
There always was a Saber Spirit Club, but there always were the sports parent groups that also supported their teams, to my knowledge.
But all the fundraising went under one 501(c)(3), which worked under the Saber Spirit Club, and now it's much more fragmented.
It's like separate, it was separate arms of the Saber Spirit Club, where now you have the balling club, the gridiron club, that all have their own individual recognition. So I can definitely understand with having set up 501(c)(3)'s before, that it's tedious, there's annual reporting requirements for each group, versus having potential arms, you know, a parent that handles, is the point person for basketball fundraising versus football fundraising versus volleyball fundraising or soccer, for example. I can see how there's benefits of doing it that way. I can also see how, you know, there's a perceived benefit from those individual groups to stay individual and to raise the funds that they know are going to go to their sport versus funds that are going to be split 50/50 between male or female sports. So, you know, I'm sure that there would, there's going to be some challenge to changing that status, but in terms of overall management, it makes total sense.
What year did the stunt group start?
Three years ago.
Really? And then I just wanted to say, in reviewing the criteria for the WIAA Award of Excellence, much of that fell on your shoulders, so I just want to congratulate you for your leadership because?
Thank you.
You had a big part in that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Addy, just one question. I know I did ask about what are, how many code violations we had last year, and you provided that number, but what is the trend? Is it pretty much the same from year to year? Are we trending up, trending down? What's going on there?
It's roughly in that same number year to year, yeah.
And you see that as just the best we can do, or?
I mean, obviously, we'd like to have no violations of the code, but it's something we're continuing to monitor, and we'd like the number to go down, for sure.
So I'd like to, obviously, echo Janice's comment on the WIAA award. I think it's fantastic. One award that you didn't bring up was the Journal Sentinel High School Sports Award Show that's held at the Pabst Theater.
Yes.
And they had, you know, they have like a red carpet thing with many of the Packers players and Bucks players present. I think we'll have a couple athletes.
We have two, one male and female.
Present at that award show, so that's fantastic. Just kind of a question, not related to any of the award stuff, but during your review process with coaches, do you have a set policy procedure that you discuss with them solely based on their conduct, whether it be in sport or out of sport? And, for example, conduct that would present a violation in volleyball or soccer, red card, yellow card, versus a technical foul in basketball, versus a flag on the football field, how do you go about addressing those concerns with coaches? Is there an objective procedure that you follow, or is it much more subjective to that coach's relationship, tenure, status in the district? How do you meld all these different circumstances together to have a year-end or annual discussion with the coach?
Well, I think, you know, there is obviously conduct that they have to follow, and that's outlined in our coach's handbook, and we, if a coach were to get a technical or things like that, that's obviously addressed. And it's addressed when it happens, as well as in that formal evaluation at the end of the year.
And then, I know this never really is a major factor, but it always comes in, how do you gauge winning versus losing as a coach, and how that factors into a coach's annual review? Is it something that you truly pay attention to? You know, because I think of a situation where, in high school sports, it's truly about the student athlete, with student being first, or coming first, but you have a coach or an activities individual that's very uplifting, positive, all of their players or students love them, but they don't win on the court or on the field, versus a coach that maybe parents complain about, that you don't necessarily have a great relationship with, but they win. How do you gauge, in either one of those circumstances, feedback for that coach, or, you know, overall for the student athlete experience?
Yeah. I mean, winning isn't everything. We like to win, and we're very successful in many of our sports and activities, but it's a fine balance. You know, you have to look at the whole picture and what's best for our student athletes at the end of the day, and that's first and foremost, you know? What's best for students? And again, if you have a coach, year in and year out, that's losing, we have to take a look at why and figure that out. Thanks.
And so I think this is the first time we've gotten a report from you. Is this going to be an annual report, or?
I'm sure Sarah would be glad to come back again next year and give us an update. I think it's important for the board to be aware of this very important program that's a part of our district and impacts our students. Their education is more than just what happens in the classroom, so I'm sure Sarah would come back and talk to us again, and hopefully share more of these great success stories about our students.
You're a very busy lady.
Since you're sitting here, is there any objection from the board if we move the policy Athletic and Activities up right now? So?
Any objection?
Item 8A, Personnel and Policy, Policy 6100, Student Athletics and Activities. Mr. Lewis?
Thanks, well, you caught me off guard because this is not in the order which we intended to follow.
I'll filibuster a little bit. Is this a new policy?
This is brand new, yes. That's perfect to filibuster. That's all I needed. So, Policy 6100 that you have before you is brand new. This was obviously one of the policies that we found in our review between WASB and our policies that we didn't have. So basically, it's fairly straightforward to say that we're going to provide opportunities, whether they're athletics-based or activities-based. Hopefully, everyone had a chance to read it, but, you know, one of the things I wanted to point out was the extensively of the administrative rules in terms of pointing on new requests that Sarah had talked about, and requirements within those activities for the students and for the district itself. But with that, I think it's fairly straightforward. It does also touch on, there's a paragraph on non-discrimination, which I think is also 100% necessary.
I think it's pretty straightforward, but I have one slight issue that I wanted to bring up, and that's, if, if there, and I don't want to delve too deeply into it because it has to do with the physical health of students, but, and you might recall something that has to do with this, if a student wants to participate in a sport and has a physical condition, and a parent wants a student to participate in a sport, and the district thinks the student should not participate in the sport because of a health problem, but the parent is really pushing for it, and we say no because we know it could harm, you know, physically harm them, is there, shouldn't that be put in here? Or not? Because it doesn't really cover that in our exact policy, and I think we might have had that issue in the past. And we didn't have this policy.
Like language where participation is at the discretion of the district, or something like that?
It just doesn't quite cover that issue, and since I know we may have had that issue in the past, I'm...
It was an incredibly unique situation, one that I believe is very rare, so I'm feeling a little less like we need to write policy language around it. The key is that we don't discriminate against any student, and whatever actions were taken in that particular instance, hopefully were deemed as non-discriminatory. And we would never not allow someone to participate in an activity. So without getting into the details of that particular situation, we would be at great risk if we were to not allow a student to participate. So I can't imagine writing language in here of any sort that would say, "Under these circumstances, we're going to say kids can't participate." I just don't think we should go there.
Okay. Do they have to qualify medically? I mean, a physician has to?
Yes, sure. We have the WIAA physical, and then we look at the physician's recommendations. If they say cannot participate, well, then they're not going to be participating.
Well, that's part of the participation process in here? It doesn't, they have to medically?
That's required by WIAA. They have to have a physical, so...
It's also required by coaches and any staff that are supervising those events to ensure the safety of the students. And I think, I kind of agree with Judy, that including something like that would be either A, so rarely used that it may not be relevant, or if it is going to be used, there's probably going to be a hole poked in it because there's going to be something that we can't think of. And I think ultimately, that decision to allow participation is still up to the coach and/or staff supervising that activity, regardless of what condition it may be. You know, there's restrictions from the WIAA and legally now against, with concussions, and we have that as part of a policy, but that law and science is continually changing. So I think with the utmost responsibility resting with the coach and/or teacher or parent supervising that activity, I think that that requirement and/or legally sponsored requirement for whoever that coach is, I think will always rest higher than a parent that truly wants their kid to participate regardless of what that condition might be.
Okay. That's a good question.
I just had one thing that was relatively minor, I think, but in the Administrative Rules Under 2, for requests for a new school-sponsored activity, it just reads that, "Use the official application request form accessible by contact, contacting the Athletics and Activities Director." Is that something where you, they really need to get the form from you, or they just need to maybe contact the office of the Athletics and Activities Director? Or is there a form on the website that they fill out? It's got to go to you for review, but?
Right.
The way it's written now is they have to go to you to get the form.
Right. We currently have that, just so I can talk them through the process. A lot of times, they think it's going to be implemented next week, and so I just kind of walk them through the process. I ask them if they have an advisor in mind, you know, an in-house staff member, things like that, so...
So you do want the process to start with you?
Yeah, it's helpful. Yeah.
What are some of the new requests that you've seen?
For this year or for next year already?
Yeah, this year, next year?
Well, this year, we added book club, TED-Ed Club. We reinstituted the service club. Franklin Youth Initiative, Franklin Volition is new this year. I'm missing two.
Sign Language Club.
Sign Language Club, yep. Did I mention TED-Ed? TED-Ed Club, yeah. So, yeah.
So with that, I guess I'd make a motion to approve Policy 6100.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lewis, and a second by Mr. Nielsen. Is there any discussion? None. All those in favor of approving Policy 6100, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension motion carries. Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll move back to reports and presentations. Item 7(c), the Human Resources Report, 2018-19, Open Enrollment Seats. This is an action item. This is an action item.
Good evening, members of the board. Happy New Year. And with the new year comes the planning for the new school year. And as annually required, we need to have approved open enrollment seats that allow capacity as that process begins into the grade levels in which we have that room or that space. Similar to last year, the motion we're seeking also allows us to add additional seats if space does become available. And also identifies the number of children with disabilities that we can take into the programs in which we offer, again, based upon those staffing capacity levels. So, if you have questions, I know you've seen this before. But if you have questions, I'm sure I, Jim, or Judy, Dr. Miller would be happy to answer them.
I have a question. In the past, we have, and now, we don't allow any seats at Robinwood. And the history of that is, you know, it was very overcrowded. And so, I understand why that started. And, but now, it's kind of tapering down. So, I'm wondering how we are still able to do that. And considering we're able to do that, when you look at like Ben Franklin, that's up to where Robinwood was. How, I mean, what, how are we going to, what are we going to do with open enrollment in the future? And I know we're going to move the sixth grade out of the schools. But how are we handling that for open enrollment?
Perhaps I'll feel that because I was here for the history of all of that. So, we contemplated that. As a matter of fact, we also hadn't put children at Pleasant View, if you recall, because the overall enrollment of the school is getting so large. So, now PV's still large, but not nearly as large as Robinwood. So, some of the seats are going to go at PV. But at Robinwood, we remained with placing the seats at kindergarten only just because the overall capacity of that school, you have one administrator in that school. So, that's a factor. And while there might be room in that classroom, you know, the overall use of the building and that many students, it's just, they're crowded. It's crowded. And so, we feel that it's an area where we see more students enroll. And it's just getting really big. 534 students, that's a lot of students in one school. So, we did not place them, even though there are some places where it looks like there's room for them, we did not place them there. But you will see that there are some in Pleasant View. And most definitely, when we move our students to the new middle school, I think that will change. But we have to watch Robinwood. It's just been one of those schools where there's a lot of growth during the year. That and Country Dale in the last couple of years. So, I think it's in our best interest in that overall school population not to just add more kids to it.
And obviously, that's okay with DPI.
Right, we, as far as our policy goes, we get to make that determination based on overall school improvement, school enrollment, whether there'd be space or not for students, not individual grade levels.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Okay, thank you.
Do you have to apply every year for open enrollment? Or like if you get an open enrollment seat and your kid's in first grade, are they automatically going to be in there in second grade?
You indicate you're continuing, but you don't reapply.
Okay, and that would explain how you can have more open enrollment kids in than you got applications for because some of them are from years prior.
Any other questions?
So, any predictions on the impact of this when we open the new middle school? Does that open us up to greater open enrollment? Or do you have thoughts on that? Or do we just wait that the numbers play out?
Well, the open, the capacity for open enrollment is driven both by programs and then staffing. So, with respect to the new Forest Park, as programming is currently being designed, the staffing levels will be appropriated according to that programming. And then, as we place our current children in and that building opens, depending upon the capacity within and the way in which programming works, we could, we might, or we might not have additional capacity at that time. And we're adding a grade level there. So, I would say we're going to certainly monitor that and bring to the board that kind of proposal as we move into January of 19, based upon how, again, that programming looks as we unfold it now.
But we don't radically think that the program is going to change, do we? I mean, we have our student-staff ratios that will essentially continue. But we'll open a building that will have vacant classrooms, I'm assuming, because there's excess capacity there. We planned for growth, but we're not putting a teacher in there, therefore, we're not obligated to add. Is that correct?
Correct.
Right.
Although, we might say, wow, revenue potential. I can see Jim thinking that too, but.
No.
All right, just wanted to put that out there.
Don't want to go that far down the road on.
Because we got, you know, 10% of our population is kids coming, showing up at our doors. Is that, seems like a lot to me, but it's just maybe our circumstances and where our geographic lines are drawn. That's probably what drives it more so than demand or, or we draw?
Demand draws it as well, yeah. We're a high-performing district and students want to come here. So, you can see, if we open 50 or 60 seats in a year and we get 400 applications, a lot of them don't get in, but there are a lot of students that would like to come here. And if we opened up every classroom and filled it with a teacher, we could bring them in. But we're not getting full cost for the students. We're getting the marginal cost of the students. So, we don't want to do that. We just want to fill in the blank spaces with them. So, at the new middle school, we, all of those rooms without a teacher in them would stay that way. We wouldn't fill them with open enrollment students.
Although, I don't see our open enrollment, you know, going up that dramatically, even though we've had, you know, over 50 seats open every year. So, obviously, the out is happening also, they're leaving? So, it's just an in-out that just happens to go that way?
Yeah, well, you have graduating students every year, so that group leaves. There's a group that just decides not to come back. There's all different kinds of pieces to it. Some of it's hard to get a hold of, but we do try and make a projection. That's how we come up with this number on what we would need. And this number is based on staying about even. It isn't adding 67 students. It's opening 67 spots and staying about even.
So, do you have schools in mind that where some of these open spots would go? I mean, 23 is a very specific number for third grade. Do you have, we're projecting in this building, it might be a little light, and that's how we came up with 60, with that number, or 21, or, yeah?
There is math behind it, yep. There's a formula that's used based upon those class limits that are set in the class size policy against the roll-up. But we also have to monitor resident growth because that's a critical factor. We grow as a district of our own, move in transitions into the system. And so, we factor those in, and then we look again at that class size limit and say, well, how many spaces might be available there if all of those things fell into place perfectly? And then, as the open enrollment process unfolds, the rollover process, the kids that are staying are projected. And then, we're making all those things go into motion so that we're ready to open the school year. But the formula is based upon rolling up the classes, looking at that staffing level, the class size limits, and then determining capacity within, along with what Dr. Miller talked about, when we look at the building as an overall whole, not just one particular class in the building.
Yeah, just additional question. So, you're asking potentially us to approve this 67 seats, correct?
Yes, based, yep.
And that's based on employment numbers as of this year? So, looking next year, let's say that there's issues with employment numbers. Are we able to adjust positively or negatively the 67 number? Or is, when we approve the 67 number, is that set in stone for next school year?
We're looking for, we'd be looking for room to adjust it because we usually run into a spot where we've got too many open seats at a grade level where we don't get applications, so.
But that adjustment requires additional board approval? Or is that, that's just an internal adjustment within the 67 seats?
It would be just internal because we would be adding seats at a different grade level. But we wouldn't be adding a bunch of seats to get a bunch of new students. It's because it's not really working out.
Okay, so, what happens if there's an unforeseen exodus of a certain grade level where now we have, instead of 67 projected seats, 167 projected open seats? Is that something that we then come back to the board to, is that some discussion that we have? Let's open additional seats? Or do we just run with the approval that we granted already for 67?
Yeah, what we've done in the past is go with the approval for the additional seats because it comes during the summer and it's generally, oh, it's not going so well. We're pulling, people aren't getting back to us. We need to do something now. There isn't time to bring the board together and explain it and get another vote. So, that's why we're asking for a little bit of wiggle room on it to make it come out the way we're projecting.
Then, I guess the only question I ask is why wouldn't we wait to approve until the summer versus now when the number presumably could change?
We have to have a number of seats to put out there, and people are applying for them.
Do you have a waitlist? It's a wait.
We have a waitlist, too.
There's a specific motion that Ms. Evans will read that would allow us to adjust up.
So, I'm looking for a motion to approve 67 open enrollment seats for the 2018-19 school year with additional seats to be added if space becomes available. And with five seats in the cross-categorical program, 10 seats in the speech-language program, and 10 seats in the physical therapy program for children with disabilities. Do I hear that motion? Motion by Mr. Alexandrovich, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Larson, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension motion carries. Thank you. And now, we'll move on to item 7D, the Human Resources Report, the 2018-19 School Calendar.
All right, well, keeping with the same thought that we have to get ready for 18-19, we need a calendar. And we're seeking discussion around the calendar. I will just kind of highlight the calendar. I am aware that the board has seen the calendar. And what you see before you has a very similar start pattern in that by law, we cannot start until after September 1st. So, you see that September 4th date as our start date following the holiday there, Labor Day. With respect to the days that are in green, that light green color, those are professional development days. And what you see is a transition from some days that you experience this school year where we have half professional development days to where all of our days will be full professional development days for our staff. Some are before that start of September 4th, but then others are within the calendar that fall in cycles and times that are both instructionally necessary and parent-friendly. For example, Fridays, that you see those days be placed on for longer weekends. What is also in the calendar is that spring break that falls at the end of March. I know that you've had communication around that. Dr. Miller can speak to the kind of collaboration that has occurred between many of the districts in the region around creating a spring break that is somewhat designated so that parents know every year when it is versus the movement of spring break as you've seen in the past. And so, the end of March is the timeframe that was placed. It is a, almost a halfway point in that second semester if it isn't exactly that halfway point, which academically makes sense for our students to place that break there. And then, you see again, a day in April that would be a no-school day closing on June 7th. It is important, it was important for us to make, to place the calendar so that we are able to dismiss as early as possible with the new middle school and the need around that construction process with the middle school in order to vacate and then begin the, what's the right word, raising? Raising of the current building.
If we end up with any, let's say, cold days instead of snow days because we're having more cold, will that impact that at all, the middle school?
We have days in the calendar, it depends how many. The Department of Public Instruction focuses on minutes, not days. And so, we have a calendar that has some wiggle room, let's call it, for days that are weather-related, cold, or if there would be an emergency in a building, that allows us to not extend the school year. We also deploy some strategies in years when we're kind of at max capacity, depending upon the timing of those days that we might be able to do yet within the remaining school days to make up minutes before we extend the school year. Extending the school year is kind of always that last resort because people have made plans, graduation, vacation, summer school, et cetera. So, we try to avoid it.
If you don't have to worry about any of those problems, would you, that 7th get moved up? With understanding this is a unique situation you're trying to get at, or I don't know how many days you have built in?
Yeah, and it varies by level, so it's not as easy.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, it's a little trickier to do that. And we like to err on the side of caution typically. I mean, I think, I don't know that this is wood, but we've been extremely fortunate in the past several years to not actually need to go there. But there certainly have been experiences in my career where we've had an extensive amount of days and had to get really creative. And we were even, you know, you're even creative by level based upon those minute requirements.
So, I know we're not approving this. We're just giving comment and looking at it. So, once we leave here tonight, is, are you going to post this tomorrow? Okay.
Parents are very eager for the information. And it's later than it's ever been. But it's because we were engaged in that collaboration with the other superintendents. So, that's why it was later.
And are you going to specifically communicate that going forward, it will always be the end of March?
Right, right.
That'll be part of the communication, not just, well, you know, this year was March and then next year?
No, no, it should be the last week of March. There, in 2021, it gets a little quirky because Easter's on like April 4th. So, it'll probably be like, like the last week of March, beginning of April week because otherwise, you'd be off and you'd be back and then, you know, so.
You adjust for those.
Right, but we're talking 2021. But up until that point, we're really, really good with this last week of March.
And this is really a change for the whole Milwaukee area?
No, 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 no. There are about 38 districts in CISA. And just over half of them are doing it for this calendar school year. So, it's going to be a process, but.
But that might be because they have their calendars already built out like we did before. We had three.
Right, so, yeah. And those that don't have it the last week of March, some have it the week before Easter, and some have it the week after. So, it's kind of all over the map.
It's going to affect Florida.
Well, Pierce? Yeah, we had a break in March about four years ago, I think. And parents actually liked it because they could travel for a little bit less that week if they were traveling, so.
And, but statewide, it's generally, outside of Milwaukee area, it's not really been attached to Easter, correct? It's been, that's my feeling, that. It's only in this area that we've always been attached to Easter. But then, outside, generally, it's just always been a spring break.
The idea that it's kind of midway is really good for kids, you know? It's that break that's really needed.
Teachers do a conference here.
Any other comments or questions or? All right, thank you on that. And we'll move on to item 7E, the Human Resources Report, People Non-Discrimination Report and Related Facilities Planning. This is an action item for the non-discrimination. This is an action item for the nondiscrimination report.
Okay. The report is in your packet. There was a correction that was presented to you tonight for page seven. We had the wrong system in there. We needed to correct Skyward to Power School. Otherwise, the process is laid out. I'll, I'll just back up. This is a compliance report. We are required under Wisconsin statute and DPI code to have this report. So it is a self-evaluation. They specifically lay out the criteria of that evaluation. They specifically lay out the areas in which you review that criteria against, which are the areas of counseling, scholarships and awards, athletics and activities. And then under that self-evaluation process, you review your current system against their criteria and then make recommendations, which you see in that findings section. And then the close, or excuse me, that next steps of the findings section. And then the close is just really that summary of our legal requirements because as you see in there, we will then post this report and file the appropriate measures with the DPI to ensure it's been done. So I, it is, it is lengthy to an extent. I'm, I'm happy to see if you have questions or need guidance in the report. But the report by statute requires approval.
I appreciated seeing this report. It was nice to see it, especially seeing the next steps that you're going to take. Have you ever had, are you aware, have we ever had any discrimination complaints in our district?
For students? Not in my six months here, but.
Well, I mean, I, I know you probably didn't, you might not have had all the data from before. So I'm just wondering, because the, the statute says we're supposed to report those if we've had them. And since we didn't possibly collect all of this, that's why I'm wondering, does anyone know if we had any?
So there's a separate report that's filed annually in which you have to identify if you've had any reports of discrimination. This is a self-evaluation, so this is different than that. You have to do a self-evaluation. The board has to look at that every five years. But annually, we have to report whether there have been. And yes, we've, we've had students, parents contact the Office of Civil Rights and file claims. So it doesn't happen often, but it does happen. And then, yes, we're compelled to report that. But that's done through the superintendent's office.
I see.
So like, when was the last year we had one?
Ms. Preman, was there one last year or would it have been prior to that?
No, it was the last year.
And are economic factors ever, you know, as far as participation in our sports and activities is students, that there's no fees involved? Would be anything that would limit students for economic reasons from participating? It's not, okay.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve the pupil nondiscrimination report. There's no date. Would it be the twenty eighteen pupil nondiscrimination report? Or twenty seventeen eighteen? I know it's every five years, so.
I, my recommendation would be to approve the report on January tenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Just so Megan gets the correct motion. Okay. Okay, a motion to approve the pupil nondiscrimination self-evaluation report, submitted to the board on January tenth, two thousand and eighteen. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen, Mrs. Larson?
Gamble.
Oh, was that?
Mr. Gamble.
Boy, my ears.
He's throwing his voice. He's stereo.
Second by Miss, okay, so it was Mr. Gamble made the motion? Okay, was it Mrs. Larson's second?
Sure.
Yes.
Did I not hear one?
I didn't hear him, so it doesn't matter.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Extension, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then next, we'll move on to seven F, the review and discussion.
One more item on that.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Milzer, yes.
All right. Just quickly, another aspect of nondiscrimination is facilities. And in our civil rights compliance audit from two thousand and nine, we were cited for locker room at the high school between genders that they were not comparable. And we've looked at a number of things to do with that. And I wanted to go over that because we've put together a group now that we're done designing the middle school with our architects that did that, to take a look at that situation and see what we can do to bring ourselves into compliance with that. It's been quite a while and we really knew, need to get moving on it, to come up with a plan and then figure out how we would do it to make the locker rooms equitable and make sure we have enough locker rooms because of our successes and our extra teams. We have kids stumbling over each other. We have, we need more locker room space as well. And the locker rooms really haven't been updated in over twenty years. So there's plenty of work to do there. And this would be, we would probably need some addition on the north side of the high school. And with that in mind and how little land we have left, we're doing kind of a, a high level planning of what is it that we need for the high school yet entirely? And then how can we break that up into pieces so that maybe we can do a little bit at a time to take care of our immediate needs? Not that we don't need extra gym space. The fire department would like that, but that's probably out there in the future a little bit. But to take care of our locker room issues and get that done as quickly as possible. So I wanted to let you know that we're, we're working on that and that'll be put on that list of long-term capital improvements that we'll bring to you later this spring.
As, as part of that audit, was it solely based on space or quality of space or both?
The quality was pretty much equal. There was less space on, on the girls.
So that was, that goes back to oh-nine, right?
Yes.
So how long term, is it going to, how long of a term is it going to be on this report coming up in spring? I mean, it's already been nine years.
It's one of the decisions we'll have to make, but the Title IX issue with it is one that helps propel it towards the top of the list to get it done when our Fund Forty-Six money becomes available in two thousand and nineteen.
Do you have any idea of the funding, you know, the cost yet?
No, I don't have an estimate, but we have these excellent estimators that we're working with right now in J.P. Cullen. So the timing is perfect to have them let us know how much this would cost. And they're going to help us with a number of these to put numbers and costs to the things that we're working on so that we can, you know, obviously make the best decision possible.
And except for the fact that our locker rooms, we've had complaints that we have bad locker rooms. In general, have we had any official Title IX complaints?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, now we will move on, move on to the WASB resolutions. Mr. Nielsen, did you want to lead that discussion or did you want me to?
Cut me off there. No, I, hopefully you had a chance to look at some of these. I, I read through them and there was a number of them that I put check marks to that I don't have a real hang up with supporting. There's some that I had some questions on. I don't know if you wanted to just open it up to if anybody had any particular one they wanted to go over rather than going over every single one of these? That would be amenable for that.
And that includes the adminis, the, the directors too, because there, there might be some that you need to.
Absolutely.
So if you just want to run through the pages and if anyone has any, just bring it up. So we're starting with the actual page one of the resolutions.
Yeah, and a lot, a lot of these, as if there's some of these beginning ones where they're repealing, a lot of it has to do with statutory changes. And so they're repealing, they, WASB is seeking to repeal previous resolutions passed by the delegate assembly. So most of those are, I found to be pretty straightforward anyway.
On page three of the resolutions, I, I just wanted to bring up, that would be the resolution eighteen oh-two. I, I don't quite understand this resolution. I mean, I, I think it's a good resolution, but why they chose CISA six? And so that's, they, they have forty districts in CISA six. We have forty-five, I believe, in CISA one. And so we're talking, you know, Fond du Lac, Dodge County, I think, you know, Oshkosh, things like that, districts like that. And then in looking up the Assembly Bill two-two-one and Senate Bill one-oh-five, there are no restrictions on how many hours these districts for a pilot have to have. I don't, so if, if you, if we get this here, you can just have as many hours as you want for school day? It's, they have, they say nothing in the.
Sure.
Assembly bill as to how many hours you have to have.
Sure.
Oh, go ahead.
And defer to, to our Directors of Instruction as well, our learning, teaching and learning about this. But the way in which we approach teaching and learning is transforming and it goes beyond just sitting in a classroom and being there for a mandatory amount of minutes before you're allowed to graduate essentially or leave. So I, I saw it as just allowing for more flexibilities around teaching and learning. And the fact that they're letting some schools pilot with it, pilot that without some parameters is a way for us to learn whether this can be successful or not. But I, again, I'll defer to what maybe your thoughts are about this resolution.
Just to kind of spur a question, it, it gives more power in determining what meets a class hour or what can be comprised of a class hour. What's an example of something that you, that both of you could see that we aren't considering a class hour or that we potentially would if we were piloting this?
I think a lot about virtual courses, right? Like the extent to which we confine students to a class hour on a virtual course. So if they're, they're taking a rich virtual at our high school, for example, are they confined to a block of time at the high school where they're saying this is time where you're going to be meeting instructional minutes for that course? Or could we potentially flex that student or provide opportunities for them to leave campus and not be in class during that time period and still complete the same instructional outcomes?
So it must be like determining, like this module takes thirty minutes to complete, that you would consider that thirty minutes of instruction time versus.
You have students services and a chair and only work at that time. Where if we as adults take a virtual, right, course through a university, it's not every Tuesday night from eight to ten. It's on our own time and then we have requirements to meet that time.
To our earlier discussion about the calendar, like when you said, can we get out on May thirty-first? Well, you could if we weren't held accountable to so many instructional minutes a year. If we're highly successful and we can do it in less time, then we should have a prerogative to do that. It's kind of what this is saying.
I think that begs the question as to how we're going to continue to define highly successful. So I think they're putting a lot, a huge credence on significantly exceeds or exceeds expectations. When we just had a discussion about, we had one entire param, one entire parameter where they couldn't tell you how they came up with it. They don't know the numbers behind it. They have whatever else, really don't even worry about that number. Look at all the other ones. So, you know, it's, when I was looking at this, I, I try and look at the extremes. And so how, how long does a district have to go, or would have to what? Wait till the next report card comes out to see if they still get granted to have all this flexibility? And then when that year happens and they don't, now they got to go back to a more structured environment of hours? And then how, what does that look like? I mean, I don't know what, but you're, I mean, you're right. You got to, I mean, try something different, I suppose. But that was my only thing that I was, how's it going to work if all of a sudden they don't get the glorious report card?
And it'll be interesting to see as a pilot what they actually change, right? Because they are significantly exceeds or exceeds expectations based on the current structure.
Right, that's the other thing.
How much do you want to gamble on saying, we're going to go for a hundred days and, you know, four days a week?
What would the community tolerate?
Right.
Does this imply then that there's an opportunity to save cause? I think of instructional hours, I'm paying a teacher to be there. How does it impact that side of the equation?
So homework, whether someone could categorize homework as learning time?
I think the focus is on the outcome of the education, not like how much time you put in, right?
There's so much that goes into the structure of the day. I mean, even when we changed to early release, instead of having the, the free time in the morning, now you get out early in the afternoon. Well, now you have, you have people that are in activities and athletics in the afternoon, but the coaches can't get there until after their job. So now there's, it's, there's a lot that goes into that. There's a lot of moving parts. And so you can't just go, go to school from eight to two, eight to one and call it a day. I mean, there's all, all those other activities that go on around. I'm thinking more at the high school, but even at the middle school.
On an elementary level, what does your community need or want or expect? Childcare issues, we're going to not have school on Fridays or we're going to have a shortened day because to Dr. Miller's point, we think we can hit those outcomes, but that changes the whole community's expect, expectations around public schools too.
So, so I mean, this is just, just a first step with the delegates, giving the direction to the lobbyists to talk to the legislature and see where it goes, I guess. But so, where are you guys with this? Yeah?
You know, high school credit goes, I mean, does this, does this impact that? Because it doesn't talk about that, it talks about.
Yeah, I mean, generally speaking, credit hours are based on seat time, right? That's where it came from. That said, there's, there's, I would say wild inconsistencies already. You think about a, a three-credit course at a university that a student can take through course or youth options that meets for a semester. And we transfer that three-credit course back to us at point seven-five credits. So if you had a senior, for example, who needed a full credit of English to graduate, they would take a full year of, equivalent of a full year of high school English at the university, but only transfer back point seven-five credits because of the amount of seat time. Whereas that student, if they were enrolled at the high school, might be in a seat for an entire year and thus it would be a full credit. So there's, there's inconsistencies between like how we're already transferring credits between institutions and what we qualify as a certain amount of seat time versus not at the high school level.
But seat time and credit, credit definition is not in state statute, is it?
No, right, and that's why it's inconsistent.
The board or?
Well, there's a certain amount of instructional minutes that have to occur, right? And, and the credit is granted based on those required instructional minutes. So but, but school to school, you determine what your graduation requirements are, how many credits you require for graduation, what courses constitute meeting that requirement. So there's, there's already a lot of inconsistencies, school to school.
It sounds like it might be a destructional concept that would change things dramatically.
Okay, should we move on? And yet, page four, anybody?
I'd like to get some feedback from Mr. Milzer on, on these two. Being able to use funds for, in a different way, if you, if you get, if you're a high, high poverty aid, they want to change that ability. And then about the rolling averages on their, on the FTE calculations.
Right, as I was going through, I thought we could support both of them. The high poverty aid has come up before and, and we're not in that mode. But we could support that so that the money that the state is saying is extra for them actually is extra for them. Right now, it just amounts to tax relief if they get it. They don't get to spend extra, so the whole point of the money is gone, the extra money for the students in poverty. So that one, that one makes sense. The FTE calculation for the revenue limit, I can't see it ever happening that we would get a choice between three ways of calculating it and whichever is better per district. That just doesn't seem.
Like a dream world, huh?
Yes, or how would you track that if you were the Department of Instruction? And if there was some inconsistency or bad thing that would happen that we're not foreseeing when you're jumping from one method to another year after year? I don't see that ever happening. But the, when they're talking about high poverty aid, you know, you could trade them for the Wauwautosa School District thing that they want to get on the books for negatively aided tertiary districts, which are us, districts in this area. This might not make it because in the state as a whole, there aren't enough districts in. This might not make it because in the state as a whole, there aren't enough districts in this category to get that done. But if we support them on this one, maybe they would see their way clear as to supporting us on this one. It just makes sense, though, for that, for that one.
I was on board with voucher transparency.
Oh, yeah.
Definitely. And for the transportation reimbursement, it seemed like a no.
This, on page six, the, the eighteen oh seven Safe and Welcoming School Environments, that, that's just a mission statement, and that, it's just like last year. It's a wishy-washy way to pacify Shorewood School District.
Yeah, when I was reading about how that came about, that was very watered down from what Shorewood was looking for, but I wouldn't support, when I read this, I was thinking, I wrote, of course. Why is this even a resolution?
And, I mean, I support it as a mission statement, not as a resolution, and I don't think it's gonna pass, just like last year.
Yeah.
It's just not a resolution if you read it. If you read the, the background of
Right. Sarah, you didn't have a, you wouldn't have had, have seen these, would you, these resolutions, these delegate resolutions? Because this next one regarding WIA autonomy, the, the resolution, if I, if I may, the WASB supports the autonomy of WIA to, to govern itself and to determine regulations and standards for athletics and student eligibility while taking into account the input of its member schools. The WASB opposes legislative efforts to impose implicit, explicit or implicit mandates on the WIA or its member schools. And so my question there was, when, when there was a ruling that came down about, there were some kids that were acting apparently inappropriately at, probably at basketball games, some of them at football games, and they were doing chants and doing all this other stuff, and they said, you can't do that, you can't demean or bully or whatever, which I understand. But some of the chants are just downright funny, and, and just kind of part of high school athletics. But WIA put a total kibosh on any of that stuff. And so, I should say that came down, was that from the WIA, or was that from the legislature that said, we don't want any of this stuff going on? Do you remember what I'm talking about? It was last year.
Yeah, I, I do. I feel like it came from the WIA, because then
That's what I, that's how I remembered it.
Yeah, there's, we're looking at the sportsmanship guide that the WIA provides, and there's a committee set up to look at that, and they're modifying some of the things in there. And it's still obviously controlled at a local level, but they want us to follow the guidelines, same with the sportsmanship anymore.
Okay, and so for me, some of the things that I was hearing last year thought that that, some of that I thought went too far personally. Like, come on. So that's why this resolution, I don't believe I would be in support of giving the total autonomy in this, because sometimes I think some of the stuff they came up with last year was moral. Does anyone else think of that same thing, thinking of it the same way?
So there you go.
The whole thing?
No. Your last point was, you thought that what they came up with wasn't
Well, it was too restrictive.
That the WIA came up with?
Yeah, and some of the restrictions of what could be, they took, yeah, right.
Let's be set, right, took off the
That gets a follow, you can't do that.
It was, it was in May two thousand sixteen, I just liked that, it's, it's the, the Why Sportsmanship Matters campaign. And without getting into the weeds,
Thank you.
The WIA can govern as it sees, sees fit its member institutions, which is now every high school in the state. What the resolution is asking is that there not be legislation that imposes actions or restricts the WIA in acting against the WIA. So the, the resolution is asking that, is, is pushing legislators to not enact legislation that would force or prohibit the WIA in acting with its member institutions, which I fully support. The WIA as, as an institution in and of itself should have the autonomy to govern its member institutions. Now, whether or not the actions or inactions of the WIA are supported by a majority of those member institutions are a matter for their own Board of Control in steering the actions of the WIA. But the actions against what they considered sportsmanship issues, they've taken considerable actions against assault against players, officials, other actions at sporting events, activities, with, whether they be inner city or rural, you know, they're looking right now at the rural urban plan that's very, a very hot button topic around the state. So I, I think the WIA personally, the WIA should maintain its autonomy in managing its member institutions. And I totally support the WASB's resolution in ensuring that they remain autonomous and that the legislature does not enforce or prohibit the WIA enacting. So regardless of whether, you know, the, the sportsmanship action is agreeable by most in certain circumstances, as evidence to their actions, I think it was potentially necessary. And now you're seeing everything with anthem protests, whatever other protest is gonna come up in the next week, months, whatever. I think, I think that autonomy needs to rest with the WIA because they are best fit with handling those issues.
It's still another way of local, local control.
Correct.
Yeah, which is what we want.
But if they did something like you were talking about, that they legislate protecting referees against any kind of violence, what if they weren't doing that?
If the WIA wasn't doing that?
If, if, yeah, if they weren't, what if you want the legislation to stop
There, there isn't, Wisconsin's one of the few states that doesn't have legislation that protects sports officials. The WIA doesn't have, other than their requirements that, through sports administration, to keep officials safe during sports contests. So that's one area that I would push that the state legislature needs to take action because that is, should be a criminal offense versus a WIA mandated sports code or, or school administration issue. On the other hand, sportsmanship, whether that crosses the line of disorderly conduct in games, I think that's a regular occurrence with, with police presence at certain sporting events. And so there, there is a fine line between sports and activities, regulation and governance at the WIA level versus illegal or, legal or illegal activity, which would still be governed by legislature and statute.
But we have things come down to us from the legislature. Why, why shouldn't they be under those same rules and guidelines?
So it would be very similar that the WASB would be, would be telling us, here are some things that boards should be doing. And yet the
Yeah, they do.
That the, and the legislatures will also say that these are legal or illegal things for boards to do. So I think, I think that comparison is, is a pretty good one. Schools have the WIA directing them, this is what you can and can't do regarding eligibility for players in sporting events, or, or transferability of students from district to district, or, or determining sizes of schools in certain divisions. But you still have that oversight from the legislature on issues that the WIA does not involve themselves in. And that is the legal versus illegal conduct. So I, I think the resolution as it states would, it would, it would, basically, we would support the, the WASB in pushing for legislation that, that governs certain things that the WIA would never govern in the first place. And then we would ask that the legislator to continue to do that, legislature to continue to do that, but not touch areas in which the WIA does act. So it would, it would almost be in effect if the legislature wanted to come and say, a school has to have at least ninety-five students to be a Division Five school in the state playoffs. That would be something where, you know, you would want autonomy of the WIA to be able to manage that versus state legislature.
Well, I mean, there's arguments on both sides, I can see. You know, I was looking more at the narrow approach when, when they made, when they came down and made some of those mandates last year.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I, I, personally, I would say I would want the WIA to continue to, to mandate certain actions and inactions when it comes to school activities and athletics in the actual realm of those school athletics and activities. But when it comes to managing, you know, micromanaging what an athletic, or activities director does, you know, it is completely unnecessary. And I think, you know, anyone in that position would say the, the state legislature shouldn't get involved, and the WIA shouldn't get involved. And when you start to commingle the two, it, it turns gray ridiculously quickly. And I think that's the beauty in having the WIA manage the activities and athletics and, and student activities participation that they have, and having the legislature continue to manage the, you know, I can't say it any better than the legal or illegal actions that might occur in that relationship.
So you, so you, do you oppose this, or?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm reading it again.
Yeah.
It's just talking about the eligibility, which is what you were talking about.
Mm.
And I think you have to, you know, sign your school's code of conduct, things like that. What you were talking about was that situation from two years ago, and I thought, the school still imposed a penalty because it involved the guidelines of that sportsmanship. So I think, but the WIA has a places, these are things that we want all of our membership schools to be following and that's cheering positively for your school, not against imposing school, things like that. And in this particular situation, the student crossed the line, and the school district imposed a penalty because they felt like it was a violation, or it wasn't following the guidelines that the WIA put out for the sportsmanship.
So you don't find them to be burdensome, they're doing, WIA is fine?
I'm on Sports Advisory Council, I hope.
Okay.
She's well immersed. The concussion issue, concussion issues are, I think, are a really good example. There's, there's statutes about ensuring the safety of individuals. And yet the WIA then still has requirements of coaches and administrators regarding a concussion protocol type, type acti, type activity. So I think there's, there's areas in which the legislature has the right to act and should act in protecting citizens, and then the WIA then also acts to protect participants and schools.
Okay, thank you.
So are there, are there any other ones from Directors, Wardens? And then, Mr. Milzer, did you say you, what did you feel about the Wauwatosis one?
We're in the same position as Wauwatosis School District, so we would be in favor of this if, if this could go through somehow. We've worked around it in the past, we've passed three referendums, and I think Wauwatosis hasn't gone to referendum maybe ever. So I, I think they're finding it to be a tough process. And it is, it is unfair the way this formula works with regard to a new building and how much aid you're getting. So we would be in favor of it.
Do you have any more, Tim?
Well, I, the eighteen twelve, looking
Sorry to interrupt, but just to clarify, Jim, the resolution itself that they're supporting would, would reduce the requirement, or, or reduce the need to move to referendum? It's
No.
It's easing the burden?
It's, it's mitigating the fact that if you're, if you're in this part of the formula where Wauwatosis is, and you go to referendum, and they, it's approved, and you take on this debt, it's additional expenditures you're making, and you lose state aid because of it.
Okay.
So they're saying it's unfair to our people here to have to pay more than their fair share for this building that they said yes to. And it's also unfair that everybody in the rest of the state is getting more money because it got delivered to them instead of us.
Right, okay.
You were, you were gonna go to twelve? What about eleven? I, I was confused on that one, whether they were talking about a district which is financially failing completely, you know, ready to file bankruptcy? Or are they talking about something where their ability to educate students is so poor that the state wants to step in and say, no, you aren't getting the job done at all, we're leaving kids behind?
They're doing that in Milwaukee.
Yeah.
Yeah, this really affects Milwaukee the most, I think.
Well, I would think Milwaukee, Racine might have those
And Racine too, yeah.
Yeah. So, but from the financial standpoint, you could have a very small district that just can't support it, themselves financially.
And, and are they talking about that also here?
Well, it has to have a people membership of greater than fifteen thousand.
Oh, okay.
So it wouldn't be a smaller district. And it, as I understand it, it's about failing schools, and then that those schools would be, but it hasn't happened. There was an attempt to put someone in place, but it really didn't happen.
Okay, and they're opposing this, and, and I don't know why we'd oppose ensuring that all kids get a great education if somebody's just failing at it.
Well, it's a local control thing, you know, it's someone stepping into your district and taking over from their board.
If you're incompetent, why wouldn't you want that?
That, that's a decision that this board would, you know, need to make, but I
Some cities have said, oh, the mayor's gonna take over instead of a school board.
Changes kind of the, the face of things, you know,
Okay.
In education, in the state.
So are we gonna support this one or not support this one?
How many districts, how many districts have a greater population of fifteen thousand pupils?
I believe in local control, like, this though
Milwaukee, Madison.
Madison, Racine, I don't know what
Kenosha.
Kenosha, so four, potentially?
Might be it.
Day, Green Day? And it's recovery of a school district designed to take over public schools or school buildings? So it, it's not necessarily the whole, it would be, I guess if it's assigned, if the rating level is assigned. Well, it could be the district, right? If the district was assigned the lowest rating level, it would permit takeover of the whole district?
Well, I think it's, it's not just the lowest rating, it's the lowest rating over time.
Over two years?
Most recent two years.
Failing in order for this to happen. And it, I think the idea is to bring someone in to just change the structure of everything.
To help, like a turnaround thing, somebody filing chapter eleven, to go in the financial area, where you're trying to turn the company around, turn the school around. But is this saying go through a turnaround, or just take it over and you guys are done?
They take it over.
Right, but permanently? Or temporarily to turn it around?
Okay.
We don't know, but
So
Hey, when you have, when you have Milwaukee or Racine, and you have school board members making twenty-five, twenty-eight thousand a year, they wanna, they wanna know what they're doing, and, or get new school board members to be able to figure out how to run those, this.
Unfortunately, you have people who vote them in.
Yeah, I know, but look what they're being paid.
I don't think the pay has anything to do with their ability to run the school.
Right, exactly.
I mean, those two do not go hand in hand.
It oughta.
Well, it oughta in a lot of jobs, but it doesn't, but, well, I don't think that has anything to do with it.
It may be an area where, you know, you can't support it because you just don't have enough information to support it.
Yeah, the thing that caught my attention with this one is that since the school people didn't make it work, we're gonna let the county executive appoint someone to take it over and make it better. They don't know anything about it. So that mechanism just, even if you believe somebody else ought to do something, you don't think it's the right somebody.
I had questions on that one too, I was gonna kind of see how the, how the room went, to be honest with you. Okay. Before I decided. My, the last one on here was for, was on eighteen twelve. Where it opposes limits on scheduling referenda, it opposes limitation on the duration scope or effective school referenda. And, and I, I would not be in favor of this because I, I have a problem with, with districts trying to put together some information on a, on a referendum and then pat, and scheduling it on like a primary date when they know that the turnout's gonna be really low, and it's gonna take just very few people to, to move the needle. I think this is, if you're gonna go in front, if you're gonna ask for money from your community, you should try and get as much feedback as you can from that community. And so I, I would be in favor of only the, only the, the main election dates, which would be in April and in November, which I believe is what the legislature is supporting. So if I read that right, the WASB is, is saying, we want to have the ability to have referendums whenever we want.
Which is what it used to be.
Which is what it used to be, so they did change it then, right?
They did change it.
They tried to restrict it.
And I'm
Just the last
As a voter, you, you're
You're, you're in favor of restricting, is what you're saying.
I'm in favor of, yeah.
Restricting
Limiting it to on the dates where you're gonna have major elections, instead of some, some side date when there's not that much going on.
As a voter, you can, there's no restriction on you, you can vote any, you're, you know, any, you can vote anytime, right? So why do you have to So why do you have to accommodate people who are more likely to vote on those days?
No, it's not that.
You're obligated to vote when there's something there to vote on.
You have a very small percentage of people that could control how something could pass or could not pass based on who's paying attention that day. And.
But everybody should be paying attention, that's my point.
I agree with that. I agree with that, but there's plenty of times that people are like, hey, if we can do it right now, there may not be that many people paying attention, so if we can get twelve people to vote, cool, then we can pass it. And I think when it's something that's that important, people should know about it and it should be, you should try and get as much information or as much feedback as you can.
But again, that's, that's your local control, that's up to your school board to decide. This is when I wanna have my.
Cause I want that.
I wanna do it at a major election. So that's, that's your choice as a school board to make that right decision.
And it's up to the citizen to be informed after the school board or the school district has made that information available. It's you, Joe Citizen, who should be informed if it's important to you. You will be informed.
Why are you the state having to create the ideal circumstances for, for you?
And we need to good ju, do a good job like we have of informing citizens to go out and vote, but it's like.
Well, I mean, it's.
You know, it's, but there are some districts, you're right, that wanna rush stuff through, but that's them do.
Board is reviewing that.
Well, and they keep putting.
A board elected by the citizens reviewing that schedule.
Right.
You wanna be protected from yourself, please, please.
I wanna be protected from myself?
Well, cause of the people that aren't gonna be showing up on the, the side election. You wanna make sure these important persons are only on the special election when the people that are paying attention are showing up.
Wow, I was so much worried about ourselves, I was worried about everything on the state level, but hey, that's my opinion. I can have my opinion and that's my opinion and I don't, I think that's what should be. If everyone says, no, we should have it on any day we want, then let me know.
I think we should have it any day we want.
And that's what you want, huh?
We're just saying a board should be able to decide to have it on any day.
But I'm gonna be in the room that day.
Well, we can be there too, though.
So, sure you can. You can throw stuff at me, whatever you want, for the matter. Okay, that's, that's interesting, all right. There was something else on here about what, what like the energy, energy efficiency requirements and how you could pass a referendum and just call it, it's being, increasing the efficiency. And even though the community turned it down and says, we don't wanna have this passed, the school board is like, eh, we're gonna do that, we're gonna borrow thirty million for increase, improving our energy efficiency and we'll just call it that.
Isn't that happening right now in a neighboring district?
It happened, it happened in the end of twenty seventeen and in West Dallas and New Berlin and, and I don't think that's right. I don't think that's right at all. So that was along the same lines as what I'm talking about here.
Yes.
So.
I thought they eliminated that for next.
They did in twenty eighteen, but I'm saying that there are boards that did that at the end of twenty seventeen and said, we're gonna quick sneak this in.
And they called it for energy efficiency.
Correct.
Yeah.
So that you guys are on board with, but the other thing?
No, no, I'm not saying that, no. No, we wouldn't do that. We wouldn't do that.
Yeah. A board is still having to act. Still on a board.
Maybe that's why there's so many challenges to their seats.
All right. That's all I have.
You did a fine job, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item seven, G, board goals update discussion, and this should just take a minute or two. We just, you know, we're, we're heading into April when we do our board evaluation. So we just wanted to touch base with all of you to just remind you of what our goals are and I, I think everybody's had school visits and we've had reports. So the first one, by the end of twenty seventeen, eighteen school year, all gaps in policy will be addressed by the Board of Education. And I think we're on track.
Right, so as of tonight, we reviewed eight policies with regard to gaps and we are making good progress. There are, I think there's one more for sure, new policy that has to be written and brought to the board and then the rest of them are just mandatory policies that are ten years old. So I'm pretty optimistic we'll get through that.
I don't know, without Jeff, I think we'll be hopelessly lost.
Well, he does a good job, yeah. And then our other one, by the end of the twenty seventeen, eighteen school year, each board member will visit two schools in the district and share what they have observed with the remainder of the board at a board meeting. So if you haven't visited two schools yet, hopefully you can try to fit that in before our board evaluation and report to the board. So any questions or comments? That's, that's all I wanted to do. And then school board liaison reports, we did eight A, so now we'll move on to eight B, board liaison reports, any liaison reports tonight? Okay, and then we'll move to eight C, school visits. Did we have any school visits? I didn't. I visited yesterday, actually, at Ben Franklin. Ms. Edbauer welcomed me to Ben Franklin School and I spent the afternoon there. And I first went, actually, I visited almost every grade level. And I really enjoyed Ms. Mix's first graders, they were studying social studies and I hadn't seen that yet in any of the school's social studies class. And they were learning about towns and farms and people, how people changed the land and transportation. And they were really engaged and a lot of the first graders knew a lot about Franklin and they had been talking to their grandparents a lot about farming and they, they hadn't planned on that chapter, but the students had a lot to say from what they learned from their grandparents about shearing sheep and cows and things like that. And then one of them even questioned the teacher because she called Franklin a town instead of a city. Isn't Franklin a city? Yeah, they knew a lot about Franklin. And then I stopped in with Ms. Hushak, her fifth grade math class, but out in the hall she had six students that were working on their Toshiba Explorer Vision contest project, which is a STEM project that they did last year. I think there were four groups last year and three of them made it to the regionals. So these students were working on a STEM project that they've been doing for about four or five months right now, creating scientific solutions and tools for twenty years into the future. And it was like a high school project that I was listening to, just really engaged, really smart students. And I can't, you know, if you, if we get invited as a board, it'd be really nice to be able to listen to their presentation at the school when it comes up. I, I didn't hear when that was yet, but I think it's in February, March, I don't know if any of the directors know when that is. Then I went to Ms. Engler and Ms. Olson's second grade classes where they were studying math and geometry and shapes like rhombus and trapezoids. And each were doing it in different ways with charts and going around the room looking for different shapes, so it was just fun to watch them. And then Ms. Jensen's third grade writers workshop was a large class, very lively group and the kids just love her, a lot of hugs in that class, real active class. And then Mr. Campbell's gym class, they were practicing movement knowledge with the basket, with their basketballs. That was a big class too. And then Ms. Gordy's kindergarten math class, they were creating their own equations by using these little plastic bears that they would put like four bears plus two bears, you know, and making equations. And that was a real cute class. And then it's always hard on our agenda now to know where to tell when you attended a, an event. So I attended the TED Ed Club Voices of Franklin after our December board meeting and Mrs. Powsky was there and Dr. Miller was there. It was like a TEDx talk. And some of the students talked about women in the media, life with ADD, being an artist and many more topics. And the, the speakers were sophomores and juniors and it was a unique and creative activity. And their personal experiences, a lot of, a lot of the speakers talked about. And last week, I attended the judging of the Forest Park Middle School seventh and eighth grade STEM students for Future Cities competition. We were allowed, any of us were invited and I just went during the judging and it was pretty interesting to watch the judging. Some of the students were really researched and, and practiced. Some of them did it, their presentations, like they were interacting with each other like it was a, a commercial almost. It was really good. I know Dr. Miller sent you one picture that, that I took, I think I took that picture of one of the displays, real town.
You had a lot on Facebook, didn't you? You had like six or seven pictures.
I put them on my Facebook page, yeah.
Yeah, those are good.
Yeah, they're, they're good pictures. And the teachers, Ms. Fasbender, Gorak and Laffin did a lot of work. And there were a lot of volunteer judges from the, the city and former students that were, they're judging. So it was very interesting, so that's all I have.
There was one judge who said, I overheard him say, I didn't do a project this complicated in graduate school. I mean, it was impressive. They, they were impressive.
Did any of them advance, do we know?
I don't know, I haven't heard.
They, they take the top four that are internally judged to go compete at MSOE, I think it's two Saturdays from this Saturday. And then they have a regional competition in youth schools like Waukesha STEM Academy, some other private schools, that this is purely their science curriculum, or this is a piece of Core Plus for our gifted identification students. So last year, we were able to send a team to the national finals, I believe it was in Orlando, that won the Milwaukee region.
But it was all based on senior citizens in the future, how they would live, so it was, they all talked to their grandparents too, so, yeah. So now, item nine, school board meeting debriefing, any comments tonight? Nice presentations, that's for sure, from the kids, they were great.
They were great, kids were great, I mean, speakers. And what they wrote, it was advanced.
So we have future agenda items. We have an audit report on January twenty-fourth, a district administrator's goals update on January twenty-fourth, school counseling report February fourteenth, technology report February fourteenth. And, you know, Megan sent out an email, we've got a, an extra meeting on February seventh for the board. If, we need a quorum for that meeting, so if you can't attend, please let me know so that I make sure we have a quorum. Any other meetings that, or anything else? Okay. Next week is the convention, if anyone signed up, so we'll be going to that.
Who's going? Who's going?
I'm going, you're.
I was thinking about going.
Alex, oh yeah, we have.
Are you presenting?
Directors going? Not this year, no. You were thinking about going?
I was kidding.
You know, you're going.
After tonight, I don't know. I'm fine.
Okay. Okay, so then looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. That was Tim.
Okay. Okay, a motion by Mr. Nielsen and a second by Mrs. Larson.
Right.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries and we are adjourned at eight oh three.